We're now reconvening the November twenty twenty four City Council meeting. Are there any actions taken to close session?
No, Mr. Mayor, there was no report of action.
Moving on to the pledge of allegiance led by Mayor Pro Tem Newton. All please rise. Ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll now have RSO Chaplain Ball come forward and give us an invocation. Very nice to see you, sir. Yep.
Holy Father in heaven, we thank you, Lord, for this day and night. Lord, we ask of your Holy Spirit to be amongst us today, Lord. Father, help us to make sound decisions for this great city of Norco. We ask, Lord Jesus, that when we leave this place, we can leave at peace. Lord, we thank you and praise you for this holy day, in Jesus' mighty name, amen.
Thank you, Chaplain. Tonight, we have a treat. But before we get to that, this is Native American Heritage Month. City Council is recognizing November as Native American Heritage Month with a proclamation that recognizes our local Native American community members who have contributed to the economic, cultural, spiritual, and political development of our city. I want to read this proclamation. In nineteen ninety, President George H. W. Bush designated the month of November as Native American Heritage Month, and Native American Heritage Month is recognized to celebrate the rich and diverse cultures, traditions, and histories of indigenous people, and to acknowledge the significant contributions the first Americans made to the establishment and growth of the United States. And Native American Heritage Month is also an opportune time to educate the general public about tribes, to raise a general awareness about the unique challenges Native people have faced both historically and in the present, and to promote the ways in which tribal citizens have worked to conquer these challenges. And the city of Norco recognizes its local Native American history and reflects on the strides we have made to ensure all citizens feel accepted and included. And the city of Norco is a diverse community that is honored to celebrate the history and legacies of Native American community members who have contributed to the economic, cultural, spiritual, and political development of our city, state, and county. Now therefore, I, Kevin Bash, Mayor of the city of Norco, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim November twenty twenty-four as Native American Heritage Month, in the city of Norco, where all citizens past, present, and future are respected and recognized for their contributions to our community. Now, it is with great pleasure that I would like to bring up the chief. Come on up here, sir. I'm going to have him say a couple of words, and they are going to give us a little bit of a musical presentation. So, sort of, sort of, come right up on, come over here.
Good evening, everybody. Good evening. My name is Humor, which means bear. Mihaan etonene, towe tameh. Humor, Shoshongan Nation, Kona Band of Gabarino Indians. I wish, Kona, it is an honor and pleasure to be here amongst all you people. We are the first people of this land. We were the first, we still are. We've been here thousands of years, and we're still here. And we're very honored and pleased that you guys are recognizing this day and allowing us to be here to share our medicine and do a blessing upon the city of Norco and all the residents of Norco. May all your children's children's children be blessed in prosperity, your finances, your homes. And like I said, it's an honor and pleasure for us to be here. We thank the City Council of Norco for allowing us to be here and to recognize us. We are also, we also have a farm here in Norco as well. We do native farming at Five Keys Farm off California. And we're just honored to be here, you guys, really. To me, it's a great deal to me. My people have been oppressed for five hundred years, and we still are. Our voice is silent. You know, what happened in the past, I'm not angry for that, but we could learn, right? We all could learn. You know, we all could learn. Now we have a voice to vote, to put in a lot of things, you guys. Before, we couldn't do this. We couldn't sing. We couldn't sing, you guys. It was a law. The United States government will put us in jail to sing, even to dance. There is Native Americans that are in prison to this day in federal prison because they sang and they danced. Our songs are forms of prayer, you guys. That's what they are. It's not practicing any Buddha stuff or nothing like that. We give honor to one Creator, one God, one Messiah, Jesus Christ. That's who we give all the honor and glory to, because without him, and the greatest gift of all that he has given us, medicine, is the love for the people. He says, "Love your neighbor as I loved you, and love the Father with all your heart and soul." So that's why we're here today. Thank you so much, you guys. Like I said, I'm very honored and pleased to be here. My name is Chief Michael Negretti. This is my vice chairman, Mike Coman, at Brown Eagle. And we're going to do a couple of songs. I mean, we sing R and B. Our songs are called Bird Songs. The story behind these songs is that we migrated from the Great Basins, five thousand B.C. So my people went along the river. We were called the Pawawetam, the people of the river, the Wanda Weeks, the people of the river. So we followed the birds. So that's why our songs are called Bird Songs. You've guys sing Kuias June with the rattles. You've seen them at Pawawetam. We do the same thing as well, you guys. So, like I said, it's an honor to do a blessing for you guys. Mike? We also have some other tribe members here, ladies in the back. This song right here, we do, we honor the directions. Because out the directions, there was no guide, and there was no way to travel, right? North, south, east, and west, there's a journey apart, right? Get towards one. And also, too, this song is to honor the ancestors, those that came before us, everybody's ancestors that came and fought, to make it, fought for this country and died for this country, all colors of people, law enforcement, firefighters, fire, I see you, and all attack group, one old men. So, yeah, this song is for everybody. It's been a message for all you people. We think it to honor everybody, our ancestors, right?
Te holetame, ho nuvetam. 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 Nu me komi, te tane parme. 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 Te holetame, ho nuvetam. 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 Nu me komi, te tane parme. 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 Te holetame, ho nuvetam. Ah ho, ah ho, ah ho.
We'll be here all week?
Wait, 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 wait.
We always brought a big Pawawetam drum, but unfortunately, some of our guys are brought down or broken legs.
That's this proclamation. And we had a meeting prior to this meeting, and we're actually going to be doing a proclamation specific to your tribe to try to support your establishment as this is your day. But this is for the city of Norco, on behalf of the city council. We want to thank all of you for coming. And again, we're going to do a different proclamation. We're also going to see if we can align with Norco, with Corona, and try to bring the two of us together.
Thank you.
So anyway, this is a general proclamation. We'll be doing a different one for you that's specific to your tribe to try to support your establishment as this is your day. But this is for the city of Norco, on behalf of the city council. We want to thank all of you for coming. And again, we're going to do a different proclamation. We're also going to see if we can align with Norco, with Corona, and try to bring the two of us together.
Thank you. Norco.
What's our, what's our actual name?
Actually, it was, no, actually, it's, actually, it is, really, it really is. But you know what "rupa" means? It has a spell with an H. Can you guys talk about what "rupa" means? Come on. Million-dollar question. Nope. Nope.
So the pronunciation is "huruna."
Huruna.
Huruna.
See. I see.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, guys.
We're going to see that.
No, we're going to work, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll now go to city council reports on regional boards. We'll start with Councilwoman Grunmeyer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have nothing to report.
Councilwoman, Councilmember Alaman. There we go.
On November twelfth, I attended the Ad Hoc Committee on District Expansion and Facility Improvement for the Northwest Mosquito Infecter Control District. The district is in the process of putting together a five-year strategic plan, and so I worked with the other representatives on this piece in looking at what the district needs to do in terms of filling in some of the donut holes that are not currently covered, as well as looking at expanding to better serve the public health on this side of Riverside County.
Erwin?
RTA's ridership is up on all routes, and I think that last month, that it got back up to what it was before the pandemic on that same month. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem Newton?
Nothing to report, Mayor.
What I would like to talk about is something, I don't like the word pride, but I do want to express my gratitude to this council and to staff. There have been three incidents where people that I personally knew became homeless. I had one man who had some substance abuse problems, and our city net folks and Karen went out, they got him. They placed him in a place to live, and I saw him riding his horse down the street the other day, and I was really pleased to see that. And then we had somebody else. He and his wife, he was suffering from dementia, and she was suffering from various forms of cancer. They placed them, and they're doing very well. And just recently, just last night, we placed a family who, two children and a husband and wife who were having tough times in the place they were living, and they were placed at one of our local hotels. They got two rooms, food, Target gift cards, all kinds of things. And I just really want, this is, this is very gratifying. I think that the money we're spending in tandem with Corona is well-spent, and it's a program that's actually being replicated throughout the state of California. And I just really want to thank staff. I want to thank the Sheriff's Department. I want to thank everybody who's been involved in this. I want to thank Councilpersons Grunmeyer and Alaman, because they were the ones that led the charge on this. And I don't think I've ever been more gratified with a program than this one that we've ever put together as long as I've been on this city council. So I just want to thank council, staff, everybody, because right now you have four, five, six, seven, seven lives that were changed, and I know there's a whole bunch more out there that have happened. But those have personally touched me. Those were friends of mine. So I just want to thank you. And with that, we will move on to public comments.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the time when persons wishing to address the presiding governmental body regarding the consent calendar or matters not on the agenda may be heard. Please limit comments to three minutes or less. The governmental body shall not discuss or act relative to any general public comment. Our first speaker is Lacey Matson.
Hi, Lacey, how are you? Good to see you. Yep, you're good.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm in front of you guys again today, because, as you know, we are about a year and a half out of contract for the local six oh six. And as you can see, I'm the only one here today because they are working on a mainline water leak for you guys. So they're out there working hard for you guys. The Parks Department works hard for you guys. Every event you have up at Ingalls, they're there on the ground, bloods, sweat, and tears working for you guys. And like I said, we're a year and a half without contract, a year and a half without raises. They haven't, especially the Public Works. I've talked to you guys about that before. You guys did a comp and class study over two years ago. It has been implemented throughout the whole city, except for these five employees at Public Works still have not received that. And with our economy, holidays coming, they really need this, guys. We quite don't understand why we haven't gotten back to the table, especially with the departure of the former city manager back in August. We feel like we are so, we have the same ideas and want the same things, and we would really like to get back to the table and end this and get a contract for our guys so that they can continue to feel appreciated by the city. They're putting in the hard work, and they would really like to get this taken care of. Like I said, we don't understand why we haven't gotten there yet. From what I understand, your, our main concern was retirement medical, and you guys are status quo back to where it was. So we don't understand why we can't get back to the table and negotiate and finish our contract. Like I said, it's a year and a half for these guys. The Public Works is over two years waiting on their comp and class study that everybody else has already have. And so we are asking you guys, please, let's come back to the table, let's finish this, and let's get a contract for these guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Lacey.
Our next speaker is Andrea Gladson.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for the time. Tonight, I want to address Councilwoman Catherine Alman. I want to tell you how much I appreciate your sacrificial service the last four years. Sorry, I'm getting over cold. Hopefully, don't start coughing. One simple questioning email thrust you into the limelight, and you became the voice of the people here in Norco that felt powerless before authority. And yet, by organizing, persisting, risking, you have created enough power to change the community, even if it's just a little tiny bit. It's been an honor to have volunteered beside you in a number of local lawn profits, as well observing your dedication to veterans, attempting to make the council job accessible to all who have families. Your willingness to be transparent, your five-minute recap is brilliant, and it's opened the door for everybody who has social media to see what's happening here. You have worked to create an ethic, an ethical policy and commitment from council and commissioners, and you have asked the questions that ruffled feathers. And you know what? They deserve to be ruffled. Here at the end of your term, I want to remind you that your triumph is bringing people together. It's an ongoing process with victories and defeats, but in the long run, consciousness is growing. You did what you promised to do, and for that, I am grateful. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kurt Knox.
Hi, Kurt.
Hello. Katie, I stand here today not just to honor your service, but to celebrate your lasting legacy that you built for the people of Norco. Your unwavering commitment to do what was right, even in the face of criticism, speaks volumes about your courage, integrity, and vision. You set a standard for leadership that is both inspiring and transformative, one that others should try, try to strive to follow for years to come. As councilwoman, your achievements have been remarkable. You spearheaded the backing of efforts for housing for veterans, ensuring that those who have served are not forgotten. You have advanced Park and Recreation Master Plan, creating opportunities for spaces where youth can survive. You worked to, you worked to protect the historic Equestrian District, preserving a vital part of Norco's identity, safeguarding its heritage for generations to come. But you did not stop there. You united the community, introducing Norco's Day of the Dead celebration and honoring the rich diversity of our culture. You ensured the city recognizes the diversity with monthly proclamation, including the first acknowledgement of Black History Month and the Native American History Month, a milestone that amplified every voice in our community. You also empowered the next generation by appointing youth commissioners to every city commission, paving the way for young leaders to grow and serve. What truly sets you apart is your commitment to inclusivity. You have been a champion for all citizens, breaking barriers and challenging the status quo. You temporarily dismantled the Good Old Boys Club, creating a government that listens, acts, and represents everyone. You brought transparency to local government, making it accessible to all by sharing live recaps of every city council meeting. Norco has never had a leader as fearless, innovative, and committed to justice as you. Katie, you are more than a councilwoman. You're a trailblazer, a visionary, and a role model for current and future leaders. Your dedication and service have left a permanent mark on our city. Norco is better, stronger, and kinder because of your leadership. On behalf of a grateful community, I thank you for showing us what true leadership looks like. Norco will be forever indebted to your courage and vision.
Our next speaker is Tammy Frederick.
Everybody has coughed tonight. Good evening, council members. I'm here today to express my gratitude to Councilmember Catherine Alman for her service to Norco for the last four years. Her accomplishments are many, including focusing on the aging infrastructure of Norco, protecting public safety, protecting Norco's animal and agricultural living, and also, very important and personal to me, is her attention to detail in revising the warehouse regulations. There's a lot of cities out there that don't pay that attention. She's an example of great leadership who puts her constituents first. She is thoughtful and transparent in her policy and recommendations. Her efforts in making the city of Norco more professional with its policies, such as the Code of Ethics, is commendable. The city council is a nonpartisan position. She exemplifies this, and the newly elected and returning members could learn from this. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jerry Wambucker.
Jerry, how are you?
Great, Mayor. How about yourself?
Good.
Mayor and councilmembers, last council meeting, I mentioned there was a safety hazard at the corner of Corona and Second Street, a city-owned lot in the form of a forty-foot pine tree that had been done for years. Staff took my information and concerns. They expeditiously went out to the site, and They, uh, expeditiously went out to the site and apparently concurred with my concern of the, uh, safety issue. And I'm pleased to inform you that on Monday, a contract city crew, I'm sorry, tree crew, was out there and mitigated the hazard. The tree is gone. As a matter of fact, they cleaned up part of the lot as well. It's clear to see that it is now a triangle, not a rectangle. And so, uh, I'm pleased with the speed and diligence of the staff in taking care of this problem and knowing that members of the committee are safe now. My realtor has reached out to the city manager once again to reiterate my offer to purchase the property, a cash offer at appraised value, because I have visions of putting a horse facility there. I want people, when they drive down the artery of Second Street, heading to the high school, to see Horstown USA. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Our next speaker is Maria Pichet.
Hello.
Hi, Maria, how are you?
I'm fine, thank you. I just want to thank you all as council members for the job that you do and all the other staff members and people in authority that make this community as great as it is. I look at Norco as a unique environment, agriculture and horse community, small-town feel to it. I'm really been upset because I've seen the online and public vitriol and absolute wickedness and hate-mongering directed at Ms. Catherine Alman. I've had it in front of me, I've seen it at the parade, I've seen it online about... And I'm just asking people in leadership, in council, I, I don't affiliate with any party, I didn't vote on you affiliated on your party, I voted on your integrity, your character, your transparency, your community-mindedness. I'm about the people, very much about the people, and I even care about the people that aren't being so nice. But I don't know if there's some message that can be put out there to say, let's be gracious in our victories and gracious about supporting those who are victorious, as well as being gracious in our defeats. And I want to personally thank you, Councilman Alman. I'm proud of what you've done, I'm proud of what all of you have done. But also, I come from a background where people are marginalized and not included, and I appreciate what you've done to make those people have a voice out in our community as well, and all what you've done for our youth. Our youth are looking up to us. As a leader, with your councilman, a teacher, a parent, don't teach the youth that we can be bullies and be so mean-spirited. I appreciate your time and letting me say that.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jacob Daruvala. Sorry, Jacob.
That was perfect. Howdy, Mayor, council members. This is my sister, Maya. With me. Um, good evening, my name is Jacob Daruvala, and I want to express my deep gratitude to Councilmember Catherine Alman for her time, uh, as her time on this day has comes to an end. Catherine, your leadership has been transformative for so many of us who call Norco home. I've lived here for twenty-two years, and while I've faced my share of challenges, the city has always been home. Growing up, I earned four permanent scars from riding my bike on our horse trails to and from school for years. I attended the Norco Fair every year with my friends, I've walked on Sixth Street during parades. It was at Norco High School, in Council Grunmeyer's classroom, that I met the love of my life, and ten years after graduation, he and I are still together. My mom founded the Norco Moms Club and served as its first president. My dad commuted from Norco to Orange County for over twenty years as a deputy sheriff, proud to come home to this city. Norco has always been home to us, even through its ups and downs. And Catherine, these last four years have made me prouder of this city than I've ever been before. Your leadership gave me hope for what Norco could be, a place where every resident can feel seen and included and celebrated. During your time on the council, my family embraced Norco's rural lifestyle in new ways. We got chickens, we started raising chickens, we started building up our garden. We made new friends through your campaign and found ourselves more involved in this community than ever. I even started wearing my hat. And, and when I go places and when people bring it up, I tell them proudly that I am from Norco. While I may not know what's ahead for the city, I'm deeply thankful for the work that you've done to make Norco feel more like home, more like home than I have ever experienced before. You've given me the strength to be here today and to say, my name is Jacob Daruvala, I'm a mixed-race Latino and Indian man, I'm a queer man, I am a progressive man, and I am a Norconian. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
There's no further comments, Mayor.
Closing public comments, moving on to the consent item. Uh, do council members have any items to be pulled? Do we have any public comment, any public that wants to?
No public comments.
All right, do I hear a motion to approve?
I'll second, but I'd like to recuse from voting on three F, please.
Please vote on the remainder.
Thank you. Moving on to five. Five A Community Development Director Robles will answer any questions on this particular Do we have any questions? All right. Do we have any public comments?
No public comments, Mayor.
May I have a motion?
So moved.
And the motion passes unanimous, thank you.
Moving on to six. Uh, does city staff have any, have any, uh, comments? The set, any, yes?
Um, I'd just like to, um, let the community know that we do have four youth commission, um, seats that are available. Applications are being accepted now. So if you have any questions or concerns, you can see me if you're here tonight after the meeting, or please go on to our website, um, to our government portal and, um, click on the committees and commissions, and you'll see what, um, the application for you to fill out. Also, there is one position, um, seat available for Measure R, and we are accepting applications for that also. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other staff? City attorney?
No, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
City manager? Uh, Berwin?
No.
Robin? Greg? Catherine?
Yes, so I attended the, uh, Eat Center had a workshop on apiaries and beekeeping, and I'd, uh, with the consensus of my colleagues, um, one of the things that was brought up was the cost that it takes to get started in beekeeping, and we looked at ordinances in different cities. And this is something that we've updated to make beekeeping possible on more of our lots. Um, right now, our permit is a hundred and seventy-two dollars with a fee of three dollars, so it's a hundred and seventy-five dollars. Um, but what I learned is beekeeping is quite expensive to start for a beginner. It's probably around, hmm, eight hundred dollars. So if you add that fee on top of it, it's about a thousand dollars. And so being that we want to promote agriculture, uh, in our city, want to ask if staff can look at, uh, some ways that we could kind of make this a little more affordable, perhaps at least at the first year, lower that fee, or do inspections every other year, um, unless there's an issue that comes up. So is there some way that, at least with the starting of this, um, we can make it a little more affordable for, for our families? So I'll, I'll make a motion for that.
And motion passes, thank you.
And I'm going to close with, uh, on December 7th, we're going to be having our annual ceremony at the, um, George Ingalls Memorial. Pretty much all the December, well, all the December 7th guys, I think, are gone now. I think there might be one or two left, possibly. But we do this so that we don't forget not just Pearl Harbor, but we don't forget 9/11, we don't forget, we don't forget Afghanistan, we don't forget these places that, quite honestly, for a lot of people, it's very uncomfortable to think about them. And so I hope, I hope we get a big turnout. The irony is, is we found out at sort of a late date that we couldn't use the Navy Base, but our guest speaker is going to be the current commanding officer. So that's going to be good. And then, uh, last night, the city, um, the, the Corona Norco Unified School District approved the memorial at Norco High School, uh, for the fallen five Norco High School graduates. And that'll be right, right at the front when you go through the front gates. Um, we've already ordered the helmet, rifle, and boots. And again, that will be to the five that were killed in action and in service. And then finally, I, yesterday, um, we have a very good relationship with the school district, and I went to the student of the year, put on by the county superintendent, and then each of the high schools had a student of the month. And it was so impressive to hear those kids speak. I was just, I was literally blown away. I mean, at that age, I was just like, I was trying to figure out how to throw a better curveball. And I mean, they're talking about being doctors, and it was just very impressive. And what I would like is if we could get that list and maybe at least reach out, I've already talked to Melissa and I've talked to the principal of JFK, but maybe if we could reach out and, and once again, let them know about these commissionerships, um, that might be good. And also, I talked to Monica Green this morning, and she's going to put it out there because it's up 220. And so hopefully, we'll get a, a good crop of kids. We had an excellent group of kids this year, in my opinion. And, um, I'm looking forward to this coming year. And with that, we're adjourned.